What I call to order the Malibu Planning Commission Regular Meeting of November one, twenty twenty-one. Read my little script here. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting. At the screen you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or sign up to speak on particular items. Those who wish to speak during the meeting should follow the instructions at malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting. Please make sure you visit malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. Excuse me. The recording secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called. So you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Commissioners, if you have comments to make, please raise your hand and I will call on you. Okay, so that's. Can we call the roll, please?
Eric Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Maza.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. You had a motion for approval of the agenda?
And we approve the agenda. Staff recommends with item four A and four B continued to December sixth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, John, will you accept a friendly amendment? I'm going to propose that we that we move items. Item one, A, one and two to the next meeting since we don't have a full compliment here.
Uh, no, I think we should vote today.
Okay, you count to three, can't you? I mean, you know, it takes two votes to take three votes to elect anybody.
Right.
Okay. Let's call a roll on the agenda, please.
Chair, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Maza.
Yes.
Commissioner here. Hill.
Here. Hill.
Commissioner Smith.
Here. I mean, yes.
Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that takes, uh, do we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. And the amended agenda was posted on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Uh, we're now at, uh, item one, A, one, election of the chair. Chair opens nominations for the floor. I'm sorry, the floor is now open for nominations for chair.
My motion, I. Make a motion to approve Craig Hill as chair.
Okay, I'm going to move, uh, Dennis Smith as chair. Other further nominations. Carrying none. Uh, the clerk will call the roll, please. Nominations are closed. The clerk called the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Hill.
Uh, for myself?
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Maza.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Oh.
You need to vote for who you want. So you would vote for, uh, yourself or for Commissioner?
I I vote for myself.
Chair Jennings.
Commissioner Smith.
That's a two-two vote. Two for Hill, two for Smith.
Okay. Um, my point is that, uh, the position belongs to the appointing authority. And, uh, I don't know, I understand that, that, uh, Mikey attends to appoint Mark Wetton, but I haven't talked to Mr. Wetton about it. He may want the position, he may want, he may not want it, but his appointment was supposed to take place at the last meeting. It didn't take place because of a power failure. And, uh, I think he should be given an opportunity to appear here as a commissioner and state his views on the matter. If he doesn't want it, he doesn't have to take it, but, uh, I want to at least give him an opportunity to take his position if he wants it. Um, so we go on to nomination of vice chair?
Uh, we need to, you appoint the the chair first. So if we don't have it.
Okay, what do we do? We've got two to two to two.
Well, if if anyone wants to try to change the vote, otherwise you could, uh, move again to continue the item to the the next meeting.
All right, I'll move to continue the item for the next meeting. Their second?
A second.
Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Abstain.
Commissioner Maza.
No.
Stay. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Motion fails.
A motion passes.
Motion passes.
The two-one-one.
All right.
Um, don't you need a majority?
Yeah, I thought you needed, I thought you needed a majority. That's why I abstained.
Uh, no, it's a majority is required for a for a council to adopt a resolution. The planning commission is is able to act by a simple majority. This is a organizational, um, item as well.
Incredible.
So, yeah, I mean, at some point I'd like to be able to make the case that I'd be good for the job and it's my time and I'm ready for it and so forth. So I don't know. I I guess it doesn't matter much to me whether that's tonight or next week, but uh, I don't want to.
Well, let me suggest that that that, just in fairness to the routine that we followed. And believe me, I have no intention of trying to block you from the chairmanship or the vice chairship or whatever, but uh, we have a routine that we have followed over and over again for many years, and I I want to at least make sure that that's been given a full opportunity to be heard.
Well, you did just, you did just dominate Commissioner Smith. So, uh, you know, I don't know that that.
Yes, you understand, but you, but but, uh, no, I I I, my position is that the position that actually should have been David Wild's. David deferred to me, but the position goes to the position of chair should go to Mikey's nominee if he wants it.
Why should that?
After that, the next position goes to to you because you're next in order, Craig. And then after that, it goes to Dennis, and after that, it goes to John, and then after that, it goes to me. Should I live so long?
Well, if it goes to Mikey's nominee, then it should go to his first nominee. I've been here two years plus now, so in total.
I understand your point.
And I also, I also want to make the point, we did not follow precedent. My my term was cut short.
And that's because we changed the election dates.
Yeah, well, we can change the election dates. That's not standard. And we appointed, when have we appointed a brand-new commissioner when in the last thirty years, a brand-new commissioner as chairman?
Never have. I'm not sure what that. But it simply rotates by the appointing authority, my point. And and we can debate this, but we could, or we can debate it tonight, or we can debate it debate it in two weeks, and at which point we'll have an opportunity to get it resolved. Um, we don't have an opportunity really to get it resolved tonight. Uh, and unless you want to take up the whole meeting going over about this stuff, I I suggest we put the matter over to two weeks and and, uh, pass on it then.
I suggest we vote for Craig.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I suggest we vote for Craig.
Well, okay. Where are we, Trevor? What did we do?
We had, we had a motion to continue the item that that did succeed, so.
Okay.
I I I voted, I didn't understand that we need to, we didn't need three votes. So my vote was faulty.
I'm I'm not sure what we do with that.
Yeah.
Trevor?
Well, I mean, do you? What's the, what's the 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 pleasure of the of the commission here? I mean, I I think it it's useful for you guys to talk out, you know? Um, if if you're going to be able to reach a resolution tonight, otherwise, you know, it it seems you have two that want to continue it. You have two that want to move tonight, um, you know? You you know, with without a, you know, a majority vote, you're not able to, um, you know, appoint a chair and a and a vice chair, you know? The other, you know, you you.
I believe Craig should be able to change his vote since he didn't understand what the vote was.
Okay, if he changes his vote, where does that leave us, John?
Yeah.
It leaves us without a chairman. We'll let Trevor run it.
The the chair remains the same until there's a new chair that's appointed.
Even when the term expires?
It's, you you, I believe it's, uh, the the chair is, remains in place until a new chair is is, uh, appointed to replace that.
So can, is there, is there any movement for moving on then? We already have the motion. You want to try to withdraw your vote, Craig, or your abstention, Craig, or not?
Yeah, well, I feel like I'm just the natural choice here now for so many reasons. Um, I I don't, and you know, I, Dennis will get his time. I, but you know, I have seniority as far as that goes. I was Mikey's prior appointment, so in that regard, you'd think that that might count for something. So I just feel like it's it's time for me to give it a go.
Is that a yes? You want to withdraw your your abstention?
Uh, yeah.
And vote no?
Yeah, uh, and and maybe on the thought that maybe if we have a little discussion now, we can just acknowledge that this makes sense and maybe someone will change their mind. I don't know.
Um, yeah, well, like I said, I've given you my position. My position is that that the.
That Mark should have a vote.
Yeah.
And he's on the screen and he's looking at us.
Well, we don't even know if he's the nominee.
We don't, we don't.
Yeah.
And and were it not for the fact that the there was a power failure at the last meeting, he would be here and we would able, we would be able to move on with this. But, you know, we're really wasting the public's time here.
Yeah, okay, all right. In in the interest of, uh, process and magnanimity, let's move on. And let's do it next week, and, uh, I just hope that I'll get a little goodwill out of that, too.
Certainly. Uh, so the motion is to move, uh, to it to, uh, continue item one, A, one and two to the meeting of November, what is it, fifteen? Their second?
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
In the absence of no other solution, yes.
Commissioner Maza.
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, statesmanship in action. Um, that takes us to the consent calendar. Uh, I'm sorry, does it take us to the written and oral communications from the public? These are on items, uh, in our jurisdiction, but not on our agenda. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, we have one speaker, Ryan Embry.
Ryan, let's hear from you.
Uh, thank you. I wanted to speak, uh, generically about some of these telecommunications projects that keep coming to the commission and they keep getting appealed and continued. Um, there's, I I realize this is a heavy burden for the city, but that, um, we need to, um, kind of clean up some of the noticing. I I went out and looked at one of the sites, uh, last Thursday that's coming up as an appeal to the council. It's something you heard back in June. And the, there's no notice that goes up like on Canaan for a proposed, uh, change or CDP except the original application that was from August of twenty twenty. And that means it's over a year-old posting, um, thing, and I found it on the ground upside down uh, near the pole. It didn't even have the pole number, uh, I'm sorry, the address for the existing facility on it. Um, it's getting assigned new addresses for existing sites. Um, maybe because the sites are so old or, you know, the permit files, it creates a new permit file, new address. And it looks like the, uh, the notice for the one on Canaan included a map for a different cell site with a big black star and PCH and address for the one that's way over Western Broad Beach Road in PCH. So it's no wonder that there's no public participation, uh, meaningful coming in from the nearby residents because they're getting notices for different cell sites, and there's forty-something of them in the pipeline. It's a can of worms, but, um, when I drive Malibu Canyon, that, you know, they have a big sign, uh, so you'll take notice that the county has, uh, the application before it of, uh, cell site somewhere. And I don't understand why all the poles of Albu Canyon were changed to metal, and then we got this one on Canaan. It's a replacement pole. No, it isn't. There's two poles there, side by side, for some reason. It didn't really say that in the staff report, but they want to put up one new pole. It's going to be really tall if they get what they want. And it's not metal. And as my understanding, that Senator Henry Stern and his, uh, comrade up in Santa Rosa area uh, passed some legislation for hardening cell sites and battery backup. But why aren't we getting hardened sites? Why don't we get a metal pole on Canaan for the one that's in the city limits here? Um, that, you know, they fish the wires inside the pole, and maybe they'll never burn. Uh, maybe the pole will never burn because it's metal or, you know, so I'm just saying, I think we need to clean up some of the noticing, and I'm not sure how that's done, if it has to go to council. But I wanted to bring it up, uh, for you guys to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I've been just exactly right. Um, that takes us, no other speakers other, Patricia?
There are no other speakers.
Okay, that takes us to planning commission staff comments and inquiries. Commissioners? Yes, John?
Yeah, um, I was very puzzled by the instructions of the city attorney and staff that we were not able to change the last Public Works decision that was made, um, on Westford Beach Road. Uh, I, and then I now hear that while it's been appealed, it was automatically going to be appealed because it was so harebrained. And, um, now we have a situation where the city apparently is going to be forced to withdraw it because it was not designed properly. And being sent back to Public Works Commission, who has no authority to approve anything or design anything. Uh, but they can make comments and change, but we can't. And and I don't know where we're going in the world, but to have every single public works project appealed to the planet, to the city council or to the, uh, coastal commission is not a good way to operate. And to design, to to have projects take another six months or so to go through the pipeline because when we look at them and we see something wrong, we can't do anything about it. It makes no sense at all. And I I I, someday, somebody explain to me why. That an item can come to us for approval, but it's a yes or no. I've never heard that in my life, never heard it on the planning commission. Ever since I've been on it, it has to be yes or no. That doesn't make any sense to me. So I don't know what else to say, but we're in a, where it's it's all going to blow up.
Okay, other comments, commissioners? We'll give you to your staff in a minute. Yeah, Craig?
First, just if you haven't heard, there was a big rock slide on Little Doom today that was immediately adjacent to the house we looked at in twenty nineteen that has issues with the rocks up there. Um, and a portion of the structure of this current house is hanging out over the edge now, so I'm curious for staff to answer when I'm done with all this. If you make a note now, um, what's the status of that? Do they, does that condemn the whole house, or do they just have a partial con condemnation, or how is that going to work? Uh, meanwhile, there was an email today to council that I was copied on. I think a lot of people were copied on. It's really a cogent summary of the wireless cell facility issues in Malibu. It's from Malibu for Safe Tech, and I would think if anybody out there, if you're going to read one thing about wireless installations, find that letter, read it. It points out some serious implications with regard to fire safety and makes a good case that the city should already be applying the more restrictive provisions of the municipal code rather than waiting for approval of the LCP version. Because while state law generally preamps here, the local ordinance is just more restrictive, so it it should be fine. Um, meanwhile, Malibu Motel project, the story polls, uh, will be revised to put up some mesh up on the hillside above showing the location of the substantial retaining wall above that, which will give a better picture of the whole scope of that project. Um, one thing I would like to see, and I guess this ends up having to go to council, but um, some kind of public schedule of fines for various code enforcement things. For purposes of outreach, to raise the cultural awareness, as it were, around code enforcement. Um, because it it just feels like people should be more commonly understanding the consequences of violating some code. You know, whether bootleg construction or a commercial event without a permit. I think there's, there's just very little sense of what the consequences of any of that might be. So it would be good to have a public schedule of fines or at least some description of how that process works. Um, and I've been reminded that there's been no recent planning commission training, not since I was first appointed in twenty nineteen. That it seems like would be a good time for a refresher. I was reminded, uh, council member Pearson the other day described the, our job here as, and I'm paraphrasing, to apply the facts to the code and make the findings. And I'm sure he was just simplifying that, and of course, he knows that it's more than that, but, you know, it's there's a whole code section in the state code about how we're here to act in the public interest and detailed criteria about fairness, integrity, and so forth. Um, and so I was just kind of reviewing that and and thinking in terms of where we're headed with maybe some refresher classes. And, um, that also, by the way, points to websites at the California League of Cities and the Institute for Local Government. They have some more info on that. But there were a couple of things I ran across that, uh, I hadn't been aware of. One of the things that the commission is supposed to do by state law is annually report on capital improvement plans to, uh, annually review the jurisdictions capital improvements program and the public works projects of other of agencies, local agencies, for consistency with the general plan. Basically, we're supposed to be looking at all the projects and saying, does this meet the general plan? I don't know that we've done that on on any sort of regular or annual basis. And, um, similarly, and this is maybe a question for staff, but what it's points out that staff is supposed to do the annual regional housing needs determination and update that. At the same time, the staff is supposed to put out an annual report on the status of the general plan. And, um, I don't know that I've ever seen that, so maybe I just missed it, but that's, um, something worth keeping, keeping an eye on and explaining. And those are my comments.
Dennis?
Um. Kind of timely.
Go ahead. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Kind of timely for Ryan. Um, well, first of all, we all got that letter, uh, of course, and, um, I think all of us here on the commission think that we probably should have a telecommunications group of some sort. Um, and, you know, I'm, we all think of, probably think of Ryan first to get things started or how that would ever work. Anyway, what I want to say to Ryan is, Ryan, if you drive up, I've got a job where I'm doing undergrounding right now, putting utilities uh, off the poles, and I'm putting everything underground on, uh, Avianda Del Mar off Encinal. Uh, Addison, the other day, took out a pole and put in a new pole eighteen inches away from the old pole. And, uh, all new transformers and all the neat hazzagazi that goes on top of the pole, uh, all three phase, of course. Um, however, uh, the fire part that you're talking about, they wrapped the pole in a fabric. And a fireproof fabric it is. So in your travels, go head out to the west end, you know, get off on Encinal and then make a ride on Avianda Del Mar. And then another right onto Avianda Del Mar again, and you'll see the pole on the right-hand side. Uh, and you'll see the the fire wrap around the the pole. It's about twelve, thirteen feet high, if I remember right. And, uh, I guess that's probably what they're doing because the other poles are so expensive and they probably got a gazillion of these things sitting somewhere, so they're they're using them, but at least it's got a fire wrap on it. So I thought I'd let you know and go take a look. That's all I got.
Okay, John.
Yeah, I just want to continue a little bit on the questions on telecommunications. Uh, it was my understanding that we had hired a consultant who was going to pre-review these, and he was some guy who worked in Beverly Hills before. And there was talk of a telecommunications commission, and I haven't heard a word for months. I've never seen or heard of the consultant since the day they hired him. So I hope Richard can tell us what's happening or whether we have a hundred and ninety poles coming at us.
Okay, um, yes, we we did talk at this commission, uh, about the idea of how it would be a good idea to have, uh, a commission made up of people with less generalists and more specific knowledge of telecommunications issues that could take a, do a better job really of vetting uh, the applications that come forward. But that was a discussion that was held at this commission. Uh, we all need to talk to our respective appointee council members if we want to see that going forward. Uh, the other point, uh, I want to make about, you know, the the whole idea about fines and and and, uh, let's, you know, let's crack down, um, on code enforcement. It it, you know, at at one level, if 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 the goal of a, uh, our zoning ordinance and our LIP is is to bring people into compliance, we we have and always traditionally have had a lot of work that wasn't in compliance within the city. And if the goal is to bring everybody into compliance with the idea that that will make the community better in a physical and safety sense, then maybe, and my attitude is, it's better to try to encourage it and make it as easy as possible for people to come in rather than to make it as difficult as possible or as punishing as possible. Um.
If I could.
Staff, oh, yeah, Craig, you don't need to respond to everything I say, but go ahead.
Well, I just want to say it's it's not so much a question of cracking down more. It's a question of education and just making people aware of, you know, what what the consequences might be, because I think people don't have any clue. And, you know, we've seen that in in my neighborhood a lot lately, uh, various kinds of things where people just don't even have an idea that something might be illegal.
I bet, yeah, okay. Staff.
Trevor, did you want to speak first? I thought you might have been trying to speak earlier and then I can follow you.
Sure, I I can jump in. I just wanted to respond to, I think there are a few items that address the city attorney. Um, the first one is, uh, as I mentioned before, we will be having a appointed by customer Pearson, so stay tuned, uh, that will be getting on schedule very shortly. And I just wanted to clarify that, you know, the planning commission cannot change a project, whether it's a city project or a private individuals project, but it can allow an applicant to make changes to the project if the if the commission is determined that it can't make the findings required. So it's 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 subtle and sometimes misunderstood in terms of the planning commission changing a project, but it doesn't actually do that. Um, you know, the Public Works Commission is different from the from the planning commission, you know? Its job is actually to advise the city council about public works projects and how to improve them. And, you know, uh, weigh the different, you know, factors in there and provide that advice to the city council, and the city council decides, you know, what type of project it wants to approve. The planning commission, in contrast, you know, their role is, is, you guys know, you you are an impartial decision maker. And what you do is determine whether the evidence shows the project is entitled to approval based on the requirements of the city's municipal code and LCP. You know, the planning mission is not an advocate for how to improve the city's projects or anyone's projects. And, you know, the only time that the planning mission works in advisory roles when there's a legislative item that's brought before about how to change those codes, whether it's the municipal code or the LCP. And in that case, you know, your expertise from seeing all these things comes in very handy, and then you're able to advise the council about how to improve the, you know, the rules. But, you know, your your advice is limited to what the rules are. Um, and then when it's a project before you, you are just applying the rules that exist. So I'm sorry if there was any confusion about that, but I I do want to be clear about, you know, uh, the different roles of the different commissions.
Richard?
Then to get to some of the other questions that were brought up, it's my understanding that, yes, yesterday there was a a rock slide at the end of Cliffside Drive, uh, towards Paradise Cove is my understanding. And I'm not aware of a house hanging over the hillside. Our inspectors were out there this afternoon, uh, late afternoon, and they did maintain the red tag on the rear patio of the property because apparently the the failure affected just this patio. And at the, at this time, I'm not aware of the building official issuing any sort of, um, limitation on the habitable structure. Uh, that, though, is something that is still ongoing. Uh, the the most recent update would be to say that there was our inspection today, and we have required them to hire a geologist to go out there and evaluate the onsite conditions, make recommendations for our geologists to look at as well. In response to the question about code enforcement fees, those are published on the city's website. Uh, if you were to search code enforcement, what we have, the If you were to search code enforcement, what we have, the administrative citations there. The fees are outlined, it's essentially, there is a, we have three fines, I mean, a fee of not exceeding a hundred dollars for the first violation, two hundred for the second. If that violation happens within one year, and if there is a third violation, it's five hundred dollars. Those fees are set by the city council. That's something that staff follows, the, the fee study, and then also in MMC Section One, we also have the description of what is subject to these penalties, and also we make it clear kind of the whole enforcement process. In addition to these fees, though, I should add that if we have to do any work on the planning side, like, let's say it's a party that somebody throws, they didn't obtain a special event permit. We are going to charge them, one, the special event permit fee, as well as the, the violation fee. And then Adrian can discuss a little bit more in detail about our wireless consultants. We are using our wireless consultant to have the first, or they're working on the, the applications that come in. I believe the person you were thinking about, Commissioner Maza, I think that might have been CMS, if I'm not mistaken. And the other work that's going on too, that's been ongoing, and Adrian's been looking over that work, has also been the ongoing mapping of sites in the city and the pulling together, one, their so mapping in terms of their location, and then also what they are and documents on file. Adrian, would you like to add to that?
Good evening, Planning Commission. We do have a consultant who is reviewing all our wireless communications facility projects. His name is Bob Ross. Bob has been reviewing, like I said, all the applications. He has also made himself available to all the meetings. So when we have a wireless facility scheduled for planning, planning commission or city council, he has made himself available to his meetings in case there's any questions for the consultant. But there hasn't been a lot of questions for, for the consultant. Most of the questions have been legal questions that, you know, BBK's Gail has been, you know, able to answer those questions for the commission and the, and the council. There, there's also a question about the number of applications that we have, and I just want to make that clear. And you know, there's a, maybe a misunderstanding about the fact that there are some applications that were deemed complete prior to the adoption of the ordinance, and then also applications that were in the, in the process, but deemed complete afterwards. And then we've, we, you know, have made certain statements about those applications, and there's, you know, those are different from the number of open applications that we have. And I've heard various numbers about the number of open applications, and I'm looking at our records right now, we have a total of thirty-six open wireless facilities. This is the total number that includes AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, and all the other wireless carriers. A lot of these applications have been around for many years and are just inactive. They've been inactive for, for some time. So so we're not going to see a lot more of these applications, I guess, is, is the good news. We had a, a huge number of applications that came in that were submitted by Verizon. I think the, the bulk of those applications have already been processed. We will see applications from time to time coming forward to the commission. The other point was about noticing, and the code already requires that we do a thousand-foot radius noticing and that they post the signs on the site. The unfortunately, looks like Ryan Embry found that one of the signs that was meant to be, you know, taped to the pole was on the ground. We'll have that corrected immediately. But that rarely happens. Most of the time, those, those signs are, you know, attached to the poles and they don't come, come off the pole until after a decision is made. The other, or last point was the the application of our ordinance. We've been applying the ordinance. We have not been waiting for the LCP update. In fact, we've been in some ways more restrictive because we've been applying both the new ordinance that was put in place into the municipal code as well as the LCP. So we have been applying both in cases where the, the, you know, the federal law preempts us from applying the new standards prior to deeming a project complete, we have added those requirements as conditions of approval. So there have been no projects that we've brought forward to the planning commission or city council that have not been designed to meet the requirements or will not meet the requirements prior to the issuance of any permits. I think that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Adrian. All right, that concludes item two A and B. We're on to consent calendar now. Item three A and B, did there, anybody, Patricia, that, then from the public that wants to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I guess we have one speaker for three A one, Joe Truman.
Okay, and let's, let's find out whether there's anybody on the commission that wants to to pull anything.
That's the only on the consent calendar.
I'm sorry, excuse me, John.
The item on the consent calendar.
What was, wait, three B one, what is?
Three, three A one is the one that she wanted to pull, the public wanted to pull. This is the revised agenda, right?
Yes, which, she wanted to pull three A one or three B one?
Three A one, the item regarding the public speaker timed referrals.
Okay, then you do have another item, you have three B one is still on the.
Right. And I have a couple of questions on that one.
Okay, well, let's go back and do three A one then. Let's hear from Joe Drummond.
Hi, can you hear me? I just wanted to say, Honorable Planning Commission, that I just wanted to thank you for bringing this item back and to thank the staff, and especially Patricia Salazar for finding a simple working solution to work during virtual meetings in order for residents to donate time to one speaker representing a group, et cetera. It's important to have all issues raised by residents with enough time, so we appreciate this being recommended to approve and pass tonight. Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, so this requires a motion. Let's go, let's go to three B one, because we're going to have to do a motion on three A one. What are your questions? I'm sorry.
I think we should, you should move three A, A one, and before we move on to three B one, that, the next one's just a receive and file if there's no.
Oh, oh, okay, fine. I'll move item three A one.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just say thanks to staff for really figuring out the, the common sense solution on this. This made a lot of sense.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded for the discussion. Call the roll, please, Patricia.
Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Maza.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're at three B one. You had questions, Craig?
Yeah, two things. One, I don't see where the northern lar- larger leach field is delineated on the plan, and it looks to me like it's, it's in, within the the boundaries of the landslide there that was remediated. What am I missing? It looks like we're trying to put a leach field in, in an existing landslide. So that would be my first question.
Okay, so this is Planner Thompson's, there she is, Jessica?
Yes. And it's, my understanding is the geotechnical staff reviewed and approved that. I didn't see any notion of the landslide mentioned in the referral and they're reviewing, by the reviewing agency, and certainly can check on that briefly, though, if we want to go to another question.
Yeah, because the whole hillside back behind there has been remediated because of it. Yeah, the other one is, it, just if, there should be a condition in this based on what the geo review sheet said that they said if it's, if it's on beach sand, that's fine. If it's on some other material, then it's subject to more analysis. And it seems odd to me that we would just leave that to the building phase, that, I mean, if it does turn out that it's on some material and it's a landslide, blah, 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 that, that should be, that should be resolved first, and a condition that, of approval that, that gets sorted out.
I'm reviewing the geotechnical sheet, just one moment.
I'm sorry, Jessica, were you?
Sorry, I was just, yes, I was just looking at the geotechnical review sheet to see if they added any, what comments were added, just to make sure we include.
Jessica. On this particular application, it looks like where the the field is, and then I think the area of concern is where they're proposing to put a portion of the field, and then the future of that field may be abandoned and they would go to pits. That's below the landslide behind a retaining wall, correct? There's a retaining wall between them and the landslide.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It's on like a driveway, essentially, back where the carport is.
Got it, okay.
The, the geotechnical is number four under building review.
Yeah.
Page two.
Yeah, so typically, maybe this is a question for Trevor. Typically, these conditions are included as part of just the building plan check stage comments, and we don't technically attach them to our, our entitlement. Is that something we can add and bring back, or?
Well, the, the option here tonight is either the, you know, if, if, if the commission wants to make it a full CDP, then there would need to be a motion to make it a full CDP. That'd be the only way to make any alterations to it. If there's been an error, you know, the director can withdraw it and make the changes, renotice it and bring it back. So those are the, the two options here tonight.
And I don't know that we have the expertise to even decide that. I was just caught looking at this, thinking it seemed sort of uncertain and that we need to just make sure it's certain before they go ahead.
Well, I think the only way, though, that we could be certain of this would be to have them do the excavation, because can the, the comment number four there is a what if. It's, it's if they're in the process of doing the construction and they encounter something, so the only real way to figure out if they're going to be encountering this would be to require them to drill a pit in the area of where the work's going to be completed, and then analyze the results, do a soil sample, I guess, a core sample of that pit, and do it all around the area. So this is more of a what-if situation while they're under construction. And if they should run into it, the, the scope of what they're asking to have done here isn't something that would affect the determinations made by this commission, or, excuse me, the determinations made in the i- in the administrative CDP, you wouldn't go beyond the scope of approval and what we're reporting to you tonight would, would still be essentially the same.
Okay, so this is a receive and file unless there's a motion to have it brought back as a CDP. There are the motions. Hearing none, the matter is received and filed. That takes us to item four A, it's continued. That takes us to item five A. Five A is Zone Text Amendment twenty-one dash oh three. This is an amendment to the municipal code regarding the dark sky ordinance. Can we get a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair. If I may have my presentation, please, Alex. Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. What you have before you this evening is a amendment to the dark sky ordinance that was initiated by the city council on September twenty-seventh. If I may have the next slide, please. With this zone text amendment targets is the compliance deadlines that are written in our code in MMC Section seventeen dot forty-one dot one hundred. The gas station deadline was October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, and then subsequently, the following year was the deadline for commercial zones to comply. And then earlier this month was the deadline for residential and institutional zoning districts. Because of COVID, the, in, the outreach was delayed and also a pushback on the enforcement requirements for commercial zones. So subsequently, what staff has done is looked at having the council take a look at this to establish a hard deadline and update the code. If I may have my next slide, please. At the council's meeting on September twenty-seventh, what the council determined was that they directed staff to draft a zone text amendment that would essentially leave the gas stations as is. We currently have those applications. We are working to secure a contract with Benya and Associates. One gas station has installed its lighting. That's the gas station that you see there at the corner of Webway and Pacific Coast Highway. So that deadline remained, since we're in the process on those. However, the council directed staff to process zone text amendment that pushed out the commercial deadline, as well as the residential institutional zoning deadlines to twenty twenty-two, as you see here. So all remaining zoning districts would be required to come into compliance on October fifteenth of next year. And the purpose for this is that this will give time for the city to conduct outreach and training programs to educate folks in these zoning districts, and then also the lessons learned from our enforcement of the gas stations and how we review it and working in with a consultant. This is what this does. So have, I may have my next slide, please. So at this time, it's just the changes to the date. That's all that we have before the commission this evening, as directed by the city council. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, John?
I wonder who pays for the consultant? Is it part of the fee for the approval?
At this time, we, for the gas stations, for example, we're using the money that was budgeted to us at the last fiscal. If we go to a system where the consultant is going, for example, a deposit taken in, like you do with our city geologist or a city biologist, that's something we would need to get before the city council and on the fee schedule and have them allow us to adopt that new fee.
Did, did the council ever approve? I thought the money the council approved was for a compliance officer. Did they ever approve using it to, to give to a consultant?
They did. We, at the last budget cycle, staff were, I shouldn't say staff, we weren't given the money, but the staff had asked for money to hire a consultant to help with outreach and review of plans for the gas stations and an outreach for the commercial and residential. And fifty thousand dollars in the last budget was allocated for those services for outreach and review.
Was, was the fifty thousand allocated for a new compliance officer ever used?
So the money that was, so that was a, a separate line item, and yes, we will have a new compliance officer starting with us on November eighth.
Okay, now, one of my confusions over this whole thing is the ordinance never mentions gas stations. And gas stations are a commercial zone. So when we passed this ordinance, we're saying commercial, residential, and institutional are exempt until October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. But we never say ever that except gas stations. Now, couldn't a gas station, that's the question for Trevor, saying I'm in the commercial zone, the ordinance says commercial zone. I'm following your ordinance. And shouldn't we put that in there?
I would have to pull it up. I, I thought gas stations were under an accelerated deadline. I thought they were carved out separate from the commercial requirements.
Not in our ordinance, as far as I can tell.
The gas stations will remain as written in the code. So currently, when you look at the code, it says the following compliance deadlines, and it says, uh, gas stations, October fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Commercial zoning districts, October fifteenth, twenty twenty, and residential institutional, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. October fifteenth, yes, twenty twenty-one. All that we're changing tonight is ju- or the recommendation, it's the council will make the change at the, when they hear this. All that's being changed are the, the, the years, as I showed there in the presentation, in the All that's being changed are the, the, the years as I showed there in the presentation and the deadline. The, the year date for residential, uh, for the line that says commercial and for the line that says residential and institutional. The line for the gas stations that says October, uh, fifteenth, twenty nineteen, that line will remain in the code. So the gas stations are called out individually and that does remain.
Okay, um, now, when we went through the discussion of putting this in into effect, the dark skies ordinance, staff made a very strong case that they could not handle all of the zones at one time. And that they spread them out over three different periods. Now, it appears that this ordinance will put them all at the same time. Uh, which prior to that, the council had approved and the staff had asked for. Now, is there a reason why we, the, uh, they're all being put every single compliance issue will come due on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two?
When staff, if I recall correctly, I want to say that we did stagger the deadlines. However, the council felt that this is something that's important and the council, the direction that we were given. And that was part of the motion that the council made. Uh, council member Silverstein asked that it be included in the recital, what the council's wishes were and what you see before you tonight is what the council has told us and provided direction for us to do and we'll be doing our best to attain that. Uh, yes, it's going to be difficult because as you can see, six gas stations has slowed down considerably, but hopefully we'll learn from this. I don't know if we're going to go so far as, uh, to, to look at changing a fee structure so that it's a bit more advantageous to have a consultant review these, but you know, those are things we're going to look at and bring back to the council. But the council has given us direction and that's what we have before you tonight.
Okay, last question, uh, is without any statement to the contrary, it appears that all of this is under council policy forty-three, which does not allow any staffer to enforce anything unless it's turned in by a citizen. And you're talking about the whole town, every house, every building, everything. Now, was this ever discussed? Because this seems to me ludicrous, uh, that it just flat out will not be enforced.
The logistics of what the council's going to expect in terms of enforcement has, as far as I know, we're going to use our existing policy. If the council directs us that we are to have staff out there in the evenings, uh, we will do as the council directs, but at this time, uh, the first thing is just trying to get the, the applications in, do the public outreach and work on moving towards the, the goals of the dark sky ordinance.
Well, my question wasn't really whether staff would be out there busting people at night. My question is, council policy forty-three does not allow them to bust people. So they could drive by a house that had five search lights in it, uh, lighting up a square mile and they cannot bust them.
Your question, John, was actually whether it was ever discussed as to whether this should be properly under forty-three or not.
Right, and, and, uh, but I'm just.
Your, your second question is now more of a, a debate. We really haven't opened the public hearing yet, so.
Well, no, I'm asking you, was that ever, ever thought of or discussed? That's not a question whether you send people out at night. It's a question of.
Was it ever discussed? Okay. Richard?
In our last staff report to the city council, we did mention code enforcement and that's something that's ongoing. We need to, we explained that we're going to have to figure out how we're going to do that.
I believe there's an item coming back to the council to deal with enforcement and, you know, to, to answer Commissioner Mazza's, you know, um, I guess question here. This, this, I, and I don't, I don't have any impression there's any special enforcement about this ordinance that is separate from how all the other codes are enforced in the city, so. You know, the policy would apply, you know, the same as any other violation in the city.
And Trevor, we're making recommendations, correct?
Oh, the recommendation here is, is the item here is whether to grant the extension or not grant the extension. That's the extent. It's not a, the, the item was not agendized as a analysis of the ordinance itself. So we're limited just to the consideration of whether to extend the enforcement deadlines, um, put in there or not. I mean, that's, that's, that's what was, um, put forward tonight for discussion.
Okay, so we can't recommend anything.
Clarification?
The, Craig? The charge we have is to provide counsel a recommendation whether to approve, modify or reject the ZTA. It says modify, so that, that would seem to allow a certain amount of scope to.
Okay, uh, but it has to be stuff that in, in front of us. So, uh, let's open the public hearing.
I agree.
Let's open the public hearing. Uh, Patricia, have we got any speakers?
Yes, we have two speakers. We have Bill Sampson followed by Ryan Embry. One moment.
Okay, let's take Bill Sampson followed by Ryan Embry.
Good evening. Look, am I unmuted now?
You are.
Okay, thank you. If, if I'm a little confused about enforcement here, it's because uh, Commissioner Hill made a good point. Uh, I'm still a little groggy from the stadium speakers. We're running an unpermitted party last night. I recovered, started to recover this morning when, uh, on my walk, uh, my head was damaged by a plethora of gasoline powered leaf blowers. So questions about enforcement are worthwhile. It seems mostly what we are doing in our city is avoiding enforcing the good stuff we put on the books. As an example, I do not know if I live in a residential zone or a commercial zone because our city council decided that motels should be permitted here. One of them has all of its lights on all of the time when it is unoccupied. When it is occupied, they simply have parties and make noise and have lights. There is no reason whatsoever that we can't have people just turn off the lights. It's not hard to do. You should recommend, do not extend this any further. Um, I'll give you an example. There's a house, um, I go swimming early in the morning. Look up Guernsey Avenue from the ocean and there is a house there. I, I don't even know what they're doing. It looks like they're shooting movies, but I know they're not because there's no people up there. The light just from all of the rooms is blinding down on Guernsey and it's, um, up hundreds of feet. Um, as you go up, um, towards the mountain on Guernsey. It, it's really time, just enforce what you got. Don't, don't keep saying, oh, we can't do this, wringing your hands. Take care of the problem. Uh, it may be a problem in commercial. I'm only partially in jest that I'm in a commercial zone, though, um, council may have made it that. Uh, I'm in a residential zone. We can turn off the lights. It's nice out here. It's nice to be able to see lights. Don't give them another year of this. I may not last that long. All of us may not. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Who was the second speaker, Patricia?
We have Ryan Embry, also followed by Hans Letz.
Ryan Embry.
Uh, thank you, um. Uh, I find this a little bizarre that the council is sending this to you to rubber stamp it, but, um, I think that they also sent it to you for public comment. Um, I think I do remember that being discussed and so thank you for the chance to public comment. I agree with what, um, I said last time and what John Mazza, uh, stated tonight is, is making all of these compliance dates the same is, is you're asking for it or I'm anticipating staff is going to be asking for it in a year from now to extend one, two or all three categories again. If it can't handle all of it, um, it really need to get going on it now and the, there was no limit to, to not go forward with the public education campaign. So I know we've got Matt Meyerhoff and for outreach. And we have, uh, the ability as a municipality to have inserts placed in local utility bills. That was a state law passed dozens of years ago. You get like one page that you can have reprinted or included in the gas bill, electric bill, you know, water bill, whatever. And that that would be a good way to promote outreach. But I don't think that, uh, commercials should be given an extra year. I think it should maybe be six months uh, of time. I understand that there's big educational component, but there are a lot of scoff laws. So let me get to my point. There's active enforcement and there are existing written complaints that were timely submitted in good faith to a law that's on the books. And I find it, uh, offensive that there be a pass given to some of these scoff law violators, um, that they would somehow be exempt or be able to, to waive this ordinance in the face of code enforcement and say, ha, ha, look what we did. You know, we know three council members or whatever. We're getting an extra year. And there are some pretty flagrant violators right now. So we do have existing code enforcement department and we have the resources of code enforcement specialist attorneys in West LA. So I disagree and I think that your recommendation should you pick to, uh, include a future compliance date should exclude any existing active enforcement and any timely submitted written complaint that, uh, applies here because those are probably the gross violators that shouldn't be given a whole next, extra year. And especially take note of those who are creating light trespass off of their property. That's a really big deal. Um, the color of the light bulbs under the canopy of gas stations is one thing. But when you got a neighbor shining, blaring in the neighborhood, that's another. Thank you very much.
Uh, Hans Letz?
There we go. Good evening. Thank you for listening. Hi, uh, twenty years ago, I had the fortune to serve as the president of the Malibu Park Homewards Association back when it was still in existence. And we did a postcard survey and we got about two hundred postcards back from the four hundred and sixty that we mailed. And we asked people to rank what was the most important thing, the most important qualities of living in Malibu. Number one was living next to the beach. Number two, much to my surprise, was the ability to see the dark sky. Sixty-eight percent of the people who responded to that survey back in nineteen ninety-five, I think, that the dark sky was important to them. And that was before any discussion about international dark skies or model ordinances or the city passing an ordinance, way before any of that awareness was there. This used to be a really important thing to people in Malibu, but now it's been lost because of all the lights in the sky. Now, my darling neighbors who live next door and they're lovely people, they really are. They like to make me happy. They put up string lights that they have lit every night until eleven o'clock. They don't eat out there. They're not on motion detectors. They put in dimmer ones over towards my house because they know I don't like them. And I mentioned three years ago, hey, we have an ordinance against those. And they said, they're very nice about it. They're, they're lovely people. We get along great with them. But they basically said, we like our string lights and it's not a city ordinance yet. We don't have to do it because the, because we have three years before it's implemented. The three-year decision to educate people was a big, big mistake. And putting it off another year is just adding insult to injury. Who's to say we're not going to have another COVID crisis or another fire in the next year? Uh, this is Malibu. Things happen like that. We've already waited twenty years for this ordinance. Three years for it to be put into effect. And, and to put it off again because the city hasn't done its educational component on it. Well, I got news for you. City didn't lift a finger before COVID hit. This is on the city's fault. The city didn't do any public education in the first year that this ordinance was out. There was no stuff in the mail like Ryan said. There was no telling people you can't have string lights. Save our skies, you know, the wildlife needed, the people needed. It's important for sanity. And you know what? Most people, like my darling next door neighbors, will follow the law if they get a flyer in the mail that says what the law is. Some people won't, but most of them do. So don't postpone this a day. If you can't enforce it, don't enforce it. But keep it on the books so that at least it's there. So we can point to that and say, would you please follow this dark skies ordinance that everybody else is? Thank you for your consideration. You'll do the right thing, I know. I.
Thank you, Hans. Uh, any further speakers, Patricia?
No other speakers.
Okay, we're back at the commission table. Okay, first of all, let, let me make one comment. The, the reason why this comes to us is because there's an ordinance that says when the planning commission or when the city council wants to, to amend an ordinance, that they have to send it to us. But the, in my opinion, whether or not, uh, the dark skies ordinance should be arranged in a particular way is something that, that we uh, can, you know, use, usefully weigh in on. Uh, the issue of when it is to be put into effect or whether it's to be continued or not is quintessentially a city council decision. Uh, and so a- as far as I'm concerned, it does really, it's not really useful for us to to argue with them. If they've said that they wanted it to continue for a year, they wanted to do amendment and, and, and that regard and send it to us. We can either say yes or no, but, but it doesn't seem to me that, that it, it's useful one way or another. It's their decision. Um, yes, John?
Well, I, I kind of disagree because it was not their decision to have this ordinance. It took an organization several hundred thousand dollars in seven years to get it before the city council. It was the public who did it, not the city council. And everybody loves that. So and, uh, everybody knows that. It's the same with a lot of our ordinances. They don't initiate at the city council. And also I think that we, we are on the ground day after day doing planning decisions. The city council, they have a meeting, they have four hours to do something, they do it. They don't necessarily hit all the points. And, and so if things started, I'm going to make a motion that we recommend, as Craig read the language, we can do that the implement, implementation of the program is staggered over the next year. And that it follows, and I'm willing to make an amendment to the exact dates, but it follows the schedule like, uh, on three thirty twenty-two, commercial is due. Uh, on three, on six fifteen twenty-two, institutional is due because commercial obviously run over. And institutional isn't as big. And then on ten fifteen twenty-two, residential is due. Otherwise, everything will back up and they'll still be working on commercial in twenty twenty-four. Okay?
So John, uh, you, your motion would be then to direct staff to bring back a resolution, uh, stating those limitations, is that?
Recommending those limitations. They also have several other items. Uh, I, I would like to recommend that immediately an education program is instituted that is funded. In other words, the flyers, the this, the that. So the public's ready for it. I want to point out that Laguna Beach has a almost similar ordinance to ours. They gave six months for the whole town. Okay, not three and a half years, but that's just an aside. So that's number two. Number three, I want to recommend that as in public health and safety, council policy forty-three does not cover this ordinance. And I, the reason I'm doing that is it's just isn't right to make you turn in your neighbor for his porch light and give your name out. And without that kind of.
Okay, let's get all your, your elements out, John, before you argue with.
Okay, that's, that is it. I'm, I'm willing to take amendments and I hope I get a second.
Yes, Craig?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion. I, I think there's a fair bit more to say. I don't know. John wants to say more if one, pass the baton to me?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, a couple of observations and then some, some issues that I think they might face. I'm, I'm sort of coming from, at this from a few directions. Um, I think it's helpful to point out first that the council came close to saying, let's not change the law and then it was pointed out that a member of the public had said, well, a year is okay. That was Pat Healy actually and but Pat only thought, pitched a year because she thought they were heading towards two years and she wanted to cut him off at the pass. So, um, she in fact didn't want an extension either. So it was, it was kind of odd that they, they went to the one year. Um, now, I, I, I see a big. Um, now, I I I see a big difference, a big distinction to make between the um. Outreach aspects and the enforcement aspects. And I think the outreach part of this. Issue is really easy and there there's some more issues on the enforcement side. But for example, on the outreach, we're almost there. We we've got on the city website, I just downloaded and I. I don't expect you to read the contents, but just to see that this document exists. This is a flyer that the city has that shows that they've produced already. That is, could be easily modified to go in a in a mailer and it it shows, for example. What kind of light fixtures are not good and what kind of fixtures are good and. You know, it has a lot of the information on it already. So that that piece of the outreach is done. We've also got. Uh, I downloaded the Laguna Beach flyer. It's a little trifold. It's a very similar kind of thing that can be mailed. Um, it's good for reference because my take on the the city's version here is that it has a few problems. So it's it's kind of a first draft is is my take on it and needs a little help, but it's close. Um, so I think the enforce, I mean, that stuff could could start tomorrow and we we do outreach all the time. We put things in the paper. We. Send out mailers, we we make little videos on recycling and whatever. I it just seems like that side of it is easy. And and can start tomorrow and we could be, the deadline could be three months from now and we'd be fine. Part of it too, I think, is that the community will help on the outreach. Um, people will get it. They'll start talking to their neighbors and it'll get around and and I I think there's a sense that. People think that this, because it involves the whole city, it's going to be this big epic uh task, but. I think we're all going to be educating each other and for any individual, for just about everybody. It'll be trivial to switch out a few bulbs or fixtures. It's, I mean, you know, there'll be a few people that have big issues, but ninety-five percent of people will be fine. Um, on the enforcement side, there's, there's some more issues, but it seems like if we got the ball rolling and had sooner deadlines than. The enforcement could be dealt with on sort of a triage basis and we could apply the resources that the city has. Uh, to the cases at hand and and just do the best we can from there. Now, I look analyzing what's in front of us, though. I have a bit of a problem because I think there are two findings here that objectively cannot be made. Unless we had the scope to suggest some conditions that would help make them uh. Makeable. One of them is um regarding the sequoia that. We have to make the finding that it that it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant. Effect on the environment. And here we have the dark sky ordinance. Partly for environmental reasons to protect the environment. So delaying it for a year would necessarily have an effect on the environment. Um, so I I don't think there's any way we can say there's no possibility it would have an effect. Unless we can kind of condition or modify or do some things that say, because we're delaying for a year, we're going to have to. Add some other benefits that will help the environment in the long run or something along those lines. Uh, and similarly. Um, the finding that the amendment is designed to facilitate compliance with the ordinance when. All it would do is literally delay compliance. That seems like a stretch to say. I don't know how we're facilitating something by putting it off. So those are problematic and I had a series of potential um. Sort of, I guess they'd be friendly amendments at this point. I don't know which of these would fall under the scope of our our just jurisdiction to modify, quote unquote. But maybe I should present them and we can sort of decide and Trevor can say, yeah, that's something we could say or no, that's that's beyond the scope. Um, so one of them would be. At the council, Bruce made a friendly amendment that uh was voted on and agreed to and somehow left out of the resolution. And maybe this is a question for clarification, but but his amendment was that. To require within the next three months that staff bring a proposal to council increasing fines. Uh. And including steeper fines for the gas stations and also that there be a plan to step up enforcement within the next three months that the plan be. Of it done in three months. Um, maybe that's not in front of us because we're just talking about the time delay, but it it would help to get over those uh objective. Non-finding, if we could say, yeah, we're making the recommendation back to council. Yes, please do implement what you voted on already about uh the fines and the the enforcement plan. Um. By way of stepped up enforcement, maybe we do something what Richard mentioned to counsel the last time. Which would be to have a dark sky lighting engineer consultant, the same way we have a geological and a biological. And you know, the different departmental things, that that could be somebody like, for example, Mr. Benya. Um, and.
If you're going to make amendments, haven't you already made a proposal for an amendment? Can we do one at a time?
Well, we could do them one at, uh, this was up to to Chair Jennings. I don't know if you want to hear them all out first and then.
Well, I'm I'm gonna have to accept the amendment.
Okay.
We can discuss it, but if you combine them all, we're gonna be.
Okay.
Rocking in circles, I think.
So the first one would be, uh, what do we do with the fact that Bruce's friendly amendment that was voted yes is not in our resolution? Does that just go, that 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 pass us by and that that's happening anyway?
See, one of the problems is, you know, I I didn't watch the the meeting that where this took place. The record is the record as far as I'm concerned. Uh, and and frankly, i- it's if you can't make the findings, uh, Craig, it seems to me that the option then is to vote. No. And to then urge the city council uh to make the changes that you feel are appropriate. Again, we are not the city council. I I know this comes hard for some of us, but we are not the city council.
Well, the question is, and that would be if Trevor did, in fact. The city council vote on this and it is in the official record. And its staff will get to put it in. That's the question.
Or 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 did they just do it, but it didn't need to come to us, so it wasn't part of our thing?
Uh, yes, Richard.
The enforcement is a a separate issue. So that is an item we're going to be bringing back to the city council. It is something that's on our work plan and we also are issuing. Um, a request for proposals to obtain that consultant. So those. Those were future items and that that is where that went. The action, as I mentioned, if one were to look. At the recitals of what the council's action was uh that evening, as council member Silverstein asked for. Uh, that their direction to us tonight was to, or excuse me, their direction was to push out the dates a year. The council actually at the meeting wanted to just get on with the ordinance. They voted to skip so races and we did explain however they can't skip the planning commission. It's this, we had to come here, but. The council wanted us to make that the ordinance, the 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 extension of the two dates you have before you. And then bring back the enforcement as a separate discussion item.
Okay. Well, okay, so then i- in support of what John has already posed with regard to policy forty-three. I think it, there's a real basis to call this an exemption because most enforcement issues. Involve somebody going on private property and looking at a structure or going checking out a loud. Party or whatever. The dark sky is sort of unique in that the very, the vast majority of any violations would be perceptible from the public street. So the notion that it has to be um that the enforcement officers can't just do it without a complaint. It seems like they should, that that should be, it's easy, should be easy enough to make an exception for this because it is such a. Uh, o- omnipresent kind of violation.
Yeah, look, let me, let me make a suggestion here. Uh. For the reasons I've stated, that A, we're not the city council, B, the city council has told us what they wanted to do and it's. Only by virtue of the fact that the ordinance requires it to come here, that it's here at all. And third, that none of these items are. Are anywhere close to being presented to the public uh with the idea that there's going to be an anonymous discussion of this whole thing. For those reasons, I'm not going to support. Anything other than a motion to either approve or disapprove uh the extension of time. And I don't know where uh Dennis is on the situation, but we probably ought to take a straw vote before we spend a lot of time. Discussing the pros and cons of of John's and and wordsmithing his proposed amendments and so forth. Because uh if it's not going to go anywhere, it's not going to go anywhere. So.
You can take a vote on it, but basically there's nothing here that was not uh charged by us to do. Craig read what we are supposed to do, right on the staff report. It didn't say rubber stamp. And and our job is not to rubber stamp. I know you guys have rubber stamps, but that's not our job. Our job is to make recommendations.
So so if you want to spend the time getting the details of your motion correct, is that that's what you want to do?
No, I I've made a motion. Craig is trying to make amendments.
All right, Craig, let's let's propose your first amendment, Craig. First of all, do we have John's motion? Trevor.
What I have is um. Is that the it'd be staff's recommendation with the following changes. Um, instead of a one-year extension. Uh, commercial would be extended to three thirty twenty-two. Um, institutional is, is it June fifteenth twenty-two? I I didn't get that date.
That's that's correct.
And then uh October fifteenth twenty-two for residential. Um, and then add a provision stating that an educational program. Um, a program educating the public about the dark skies ordinance be immediately funded and implemented. And add a provision stating that council policy forty-three should be amended to not apply to. The dark skies ordinance.
The the policy would not itself be amended. The exemption from the policy would be. In there, just like council policy forty-three does not cover every violation in the city. It excludes health and safety specifically.
Trevor, you got that?
Okay, so you want to reverse and say that uh the dark skies ordinance um shall be immune from policy forty-three?
Yeah, if that immune is the right word legally, that's.
Exam, whatever.
Exam, whatever it is.
Okay, Craig. Uh, friendly amendments, let's go.
You're muted, Craig.
Craig, you're muted.
Got it. Okay, yeah, we could just do these up or down. Um. Okay, so Richard had mentioned the city should have, and I maybe this is just part-time, but a dark style lighting consultant and just like we have the geological and biology. People. That something we want to recommend or suggest to council?
You're gonna ask, you're asking John if if he would accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Uh, let me ask Richard a question. Richard, you're gonna have, you're not gonna be able to to manage this without some kind of consultant, correct? I mean, you so far you've run into needing a consultant.
Yeah, my guess is that's where we are going to end up and that's why we were going to go back to the council to see if they were okay with that as a strategy.
Okay, so you're saying that that's. Not before us because you have another. Uh, ordinance coming up on 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 covering that.
Well, it not necessarily an ordinance. Uh, we want to go back to the council to. And discuss code enforcement and then also, as we mentioned, an RFP process and and that is not something, and Trevor, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, but unless we, you know, I don't see a ordinance there unless, of course, there's some special. Deviation from uh our citation procedure.
You're talking about the 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 consultant? I mean, that's that's a contract to bring the consultant in, so it's not. Part of an ordinance, you don't have an ordinance that you have to.
The idea is it wouldn't come back before us, uh, uh, John, so.
Well, let me ask.
Yes or no?
Let me ask Trevor, um. When we get a staff report, we get all these. Review sheets from the different. Consultants, the city consultants or whatever they call them, the geological, Christine's a consultant, for example. Um, how does that get implemented? Is that put in as a ordinance or is that part of the city bylaws or how does that work? Because every staff report we get, we get six or eight of these things that are required.
I think it.
You can't come to us without a geological review, for example.
I think it depends on, you know, what report you're talking about, what the requirement is, and you know, some of that is just part of the staffing of the city. Other times, you know, uh, you know, um. You know, that like the planning director is a specific position that is defined in the code. And you know, some of the others are as well. Um, you know, those are, those are created in the different ordinances with with different responsibilities. Um, but in general, most of the reports, I believe, are just done, um. You know, as as part of the uh. The staffing that's required in the administration of the city.
Right, unless it's.
Go ahead.
I was sorry, unless it's something specific that. For whatever reason, the city council feels that it should be in the code, like, for example, on the wireless ordinance. There, uh, the new wireless ordinance has a specific listing of requirements when someone submits an application. Uh, but in general, the folks that review those, like you see with the wireless, uh CMS or Bob Ross, that's just a contract that. Is approved by the council, not an ordinance.
I I would also point uh that this is really going beyond the scope of what we agendized for this meeting. You know, we we put up that this is a. An issue that's dealing with whether or not to extend the enforcement deadline and.
That's not where we're charged. We're in charge with advising, okay?
But no, it's not. It's not like that. Under the Brown Act, we cannot debate an item, you know, unless it's agendized, that it's on the agenda and it would provide notice. To a person that's sitting at home to show up and come here. And if if we're going to get into items about the dark skies ordinance that aren't just limited to, you know, when it comes into effect. People at home would may want to show up and say something about that and they would be denied that opportunity if, you know, we we start picking up things and putting them on agenda. That are not actually noticed to the public.
Well, we did have people show up and talk about different aspects of the, so it's.
Move this forward, just.
Oh, we're not in a hurry, Jeff. It took seven years to get this.
John, the issue is whether or not you accept Craig's proposal.
I know, I'm trying to find out if it's proper to, and I'm asking experts, not you. Okay, now.
Just told you it's not.
Okay, and I was wondering, Trevor, how do you handle the Brown Act of the city council?
It's the same thing, so.
Exactly. So we can make, we can make non, non-staff. Uh, approvals. Now, in this case, I think this is a a funding issue, so I'm gonna. Uh, decline Craig's amendment.
Okay, Dennis, you have a hand.
Okay, uh, just two questions. First one, I guess, is going to be for Trevor. We are only supposed to be voting on what's staffs recommended here. Just the year extension on everything, is that correct? Nothing more, nothing less?
That that's what was noticed here. So if it is something to do with that extension, you don't have to, you know, you are here to provide advice about whether that one year should be granted. If you think it should be granted or not, or should be shorter, it should be longer, you know, tho- those fall within, you know, the ambit of what was noticed here. And you guys do have the ability to, you know, agendize things, you know, on your agendas in the future. That's how it needs to be done. Just, you you can't talk about things that aren't on the agenda. That's.
Craig, would you please read?
Yeah, no, it's. It's more open-ended than that. It's, we're here to approve, modify or reject the zone and so modify is, you know, anything.
Just a second, Craig. I'm sorry, Dennis.
I I would disagree with that reading. Uh, it just saying the word modify doesn't mean we can modify anything about the ordinance. It's. To modify, you know, the what was proposed here is, you know, a one-year extension. I mean, we had to think what's reasonable and what somebody who's reading the agenda would say. Do, should I show up tonight or should I not? I mean, that's that's the question we're asking, you know?
Dennis?
Dennis.
Uh, Director Malika, so. I I get, you probably had to go a year. Are we? Are we staff depleted because this is going to take some work to get together and. You can't do it any quicker than that because we don't have enough folks right now to to handle all this? Is this kind of what reason we went through full year or? You know, eleven months anyway?
Y- yes, the, you're looking at a couple of things. So one is discussing the enforcement. So that's one. How's this going to play out? And then, you know, we did hire a new enforcement officer. As I mentioned, that guy starts in a week, a week from today. However, we got to train them. So there is that. Then the next step is the outreach programs and. What we're learning right now from working with uh Jim Benya is that. He feels that a an outreach program with some guidance from a lighting expert and not just city staff. Is something that's going to be helpful to to educate people. So we need to get through the RFP process and and get that started. So, long story short is, there's a lot of little pieces here and those pieces. Have to fit into the city's existing business schedule and then also give some time for the public comment. Uh, for the RFP process, for the council, to see who it is we select and have a chance to opine on that. So it's a matter of timing and then. So it's a matter of timing. And then once, you know, you get that person, then you gotta start the training to the public.
Why do you wait?
One more. So, okay, I got that. I I the 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 one thing that I think, because I went on these tours, I went, you know, I was with Pat Healy and a lot of people, we we went late in the evening and early in the morning on these, and I I loved it. And this this is important to me, very much so. I think the arrogance of the gas stations, I think, is what's gotten me. I can understand institutional, we can work with our residents. Hopefully, they understand that in time the next year or so, they are shutting lights off. I noticed when I came back from the Grateful Dead concert early Thursday more, early Thursday morning uh down from San Diego, that there's a lot of lights on from from uh uh or I should say Dead and Company from the concert. There's a lot of lights on, bright lights on at houses that don't need to be on. So I'm I'm pretty passionate about this. But the only thing I would go after, like, if I could, like, this second, walk out of here and walk right down to Tranca's and PCH and tell that son of a gun to get rid of those lights, I'd do it that quick. So that would be the only thing that I'd like to see right away of the gas stations, because their arrogance and what they pulled for the last three years or however long it's been since we've done this. I know we've had all the other things happen, but even before that, they're 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 just awful about it. So that would be my only thing. But if you if you can't really get it until a year, I guess that's where we're at, and that's really what you're asking for in the first place. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go back to Craig's proposed amendments to uh John's motion.
Yeah, and I'll just say I agreed with everything that Dennis Smith Smith said to the very last three words, I think, about the year. I think we could do it sooner. I think to to Dennis's prior point and and Richard also, um maybe we could get quicker on the outreach um and spend less money if we have an ad hoc citizen committee to help with some input on these flyers that are really almost there. They just need a little bit of help.
Great. Craig, what what other preliminary amendments do you propose?
That we provide for a citizen in in uh committee?
All right, Craig, I'm not gonna accept that. That is bureaucracy. We have a
Okay, he's not accepting it.
He's not accepting it, okay.
Let's go, Craig.
Yeah, um I I I would like to see, well, you're gonna just say no, but substantively, there's a piece in the Laguna ordinance that we lack, that we should have, but it's not about the timing. Uh so I will just make that recommendation to council directly.
Great. Anything else?
Uh I think I covered it. My notes are all over the place at this point.
Okay.
Before we vote, before we vote, I'd like to just say that none of this is not reasonable. We have five gas stations that need to comply. We're giving them five months. If staff can't make a gas station comply, one a month, we're doomed, okay? So so this schedule is reasonable. It's it's but it's as Dennis says, it needs to start. And and if we don't recommend a staggered schedule, what will happen is, and we know this for a fact, uh staff has stated it in in open city council meetings on ten fifteen twenty two, they will be overwhelmed. Overwhelmed, and they've used those same words, okay?
Okay, John, uh I I don't disagree with you. Uh I I think that 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 but whether it's up or down, either way, is is my position on this. So can we take a vote on 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 your motion?
Quick point of clarification. Richard made the case in the council meeting that he he preferred leaving the gas stations out because they were already out of compliance, and that that puts them into the enforcement regime. And I I I I don't quite get all the fine points of this, but that did seem to make some sense to me to to say they're already out and maybe
No, I I agree. I I misspoke.
Okay.
Okay.
Rich Richard, the the gas stations are not being granted any extension through this, are they?
Right.
No, no.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
John misspoke. That's that's what I, yeah, okay.
Okay, so so let's take the vote on John's motion. If you call the roll, please.
Do you want me to, does everyone remember it, or do you want me to to go over?
It'd be a good idea if you repeated it, Trevor.
Okay, so uh it would be staff's recommendation with the following changes. First, under section three, subsection one says outdoor lighting commercial Sony districts will be October fifteenth twenty twenty two. That will now, that would instead be March thirtieth twenty twenty two. And then number two, outdoor lighting in residential, it would read, sorry, number two would read outdoor resident lighting in residential districts. And then it would say October fifteenth twenty twenty two, and then it would have a separate category for outdoor lighting in institutional districts, and that would be June fifteenth twenty twenty two. And then in addition, two items would be added. The first would be um, it would state that the planning commission recommends that an educational program uh sorry, that a program educating the public about the dark skies ordinance implementation deadlines be funded and impl- and implemented immediately. And also, I don't know, I'm saying the planning commission suggests that the dark skies ordinance be amended to be exempt from council policy forty three. Commissioner Maza, did I correct, did I accurately uh state your changes?
You got it.
Okay. Please call the roll, Patricia.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
God, we gotta get this going. We don't have the people, but you know, I'm pretty passionate about this. I'm sure everybody's gonna flop on the floor when I say yes.
Chair Jennings?
No. All right, that concludes uh item four, I'm sorry, five A. Uh let's take just to item five B. This is Zone Text Amendment twenty one dash oh oh four. This is the Malibu municipal code, extend temporary parking to the Chili's cook-off site. Can we get a staff report, please?
Good evening again. If I may have my next slide, please. Because of the construction of the Santa Monica College building, the council amended the temporary use section of the municipal code through ordinance four fifty six uh through the ability to allow for temporary parking on the silly and the city's chili cook-off site uh for farmers markets. I may have my next slide, please. So what you have before you here is the provision that was uh inserted into the temporary use permit section of our code. And as you can see, it allows for the on off-site surface parking on a vacant commercially zone parcel for the farmer's market within three hundred and fifty feet of the farmer's market. So that would be their location they're permitted. Uh they were allowed to basically relocate their required parking that's due to the this uh as displaced by construction activities. The catch with this is that is was expected at that time that the city college would be done with their construction on January first twenty twenty two. Uh that is not gonna happen. At the time of us preparing our report, they did not give us a completed a completed date for of when that building would be done. And that was asked of them for both this report uh to the planning commission and also the report to the city council. If I may have my next slide, please. To prevent the displacement of the farmer's market, the recommendation that was proposed at council was to essentially just change just the year. So the language of the original ordinance would remain with the exception that instead of expiring on Janu- on January twenty twenty two, that expiration date would be moved to January twenty twenty four. So as we mentioned here, just like before, if the certificate of occupancy is issued sooner than that expiration date, then the farmer's market would have to move, or they would be allowed to stay there until twenty twenty four if the construct, if no certificate of occupancy has been completed. And without this code change, then what we're looking at is the displacement of the parking for the farmer's market uh this coming January. I'm available for any questions and recommend the adoption of the resolution consistent with the council's direction. Thank you.
Uh okay, thank you. Um, questions of staff? Yes, Greg.
Yeah. Is there any way at all that the lack of response from the college uh would end up compromising the market in any in any way? The fact that we haven't heard from the college, what what the what is proposed here is 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 what the market would best hope for, right? So the fact that we haven't heard anything doesn't, won't compromise them.
Well, Craig, I can sort of answer that. The college is not involved in this.
Yeah.
The farmer's market rents from the county, okay? The college was given by the county the use of the part of the parking lot during construction. But the actual parking is controlled by the county and the city, not the college. Well, college is purely dependent upon their contractors finishing.
Does that answer your question?
Mostly, I guess there's also a concern if we haven't heard from them yet, what if we pass this and say yes, and they come back tomorrow and say, whoa, hang on, we have blah, 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 because we haven't talked to you yet. I don't know. I I I just thought that it would be worth asking that.
Well, remember, this has been in effect for, what, a year?
Yeah.
That a word.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, let's open the public hearing. Kathleen, have we gotten the, I'm sorry, Patricia, have we got any speakers?
Chair, we have no speakers listed for tonight.
Okay, we've opened, and now we will close the public hearing. We're back at the commission table. John?
And I can make a motion for approval and also make the note that part of the reason this is critical is the car shows down there, and you all read about it in the paper, have sucked up all the street parking, every single space. So they will not survive without its passing. And so I move, I move, we uh pass this staff recommends.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh I'm gonna support it, although I didn't originally support the idea of uh making an exemption to a general generally applicable ordinance purely for the purposes of benefiting a private party, but uh nonetheless, I'm gonna support this extension. Dennis?
Just to have a quick question, uh Director Malika, was was there any other items put on this? I mean, after they get done, I had watched the meeting that Councilman Silverstein had said he wanted them to clean up the rock and everything, and then we're done because look it over across the other parking lot. Well, let me tell you that these are two different kinds of rock. The other one's got base in it, like a street, which is, there's only two weeds growing through it. And there's a million weeds growing through our piece of property. So they're not gonna be on the hook to cleaning it up, are they? Or is that something that was agreed to all along?
And no, that's 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 separate. There this strictly is just to let them have the additional two years. We're not changing the conditions of their temporary use permit, which allows them to be over there. And then the other thing we're not changing, it gets complicated, is also there was the CUP that you guys saw um I think earlier this year, if I'm not mistaken, and we're not amending any of those conditions that allowed for them to modify their onsite parking requirement.
Yes, uh let me just comment one thing. When SCE used the property after the Woolsey fire, the city had a contract with them to remove the rocks. That contract's still in effect. Um anytime the city wants the rocks removed, they can get them removed by SCE. It is in their contract. Riva did not enforce it. Correct. I read the
Okay, look, this does nothing to do with the issue in front of us. Come on.
And it's also uh ta- uh not exclusive that they can use the property. They have to share it with anybody else.
Still, completely irrelevant. Let's call the uh roll, please.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
You're muted.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that concludes item five B. That takes us to item five C, which is the coastal development permit nineteen dash oh seventy eight. Before we get a staff report on that, did anybody bother to look up and see whether I am required to recuse myself on this item since I live very close to the project?
I I glanced, and it looks like you're not
I I meant staff. Sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Jennings, I'm I'm sorry, our our correspondents didn't get to you, but you are more than two thousand feet away.
Okay, thank you. Uh can we get a staff report, please?
Yes, thank, uh good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the commission. Um I'm David Eng, case planner for the project for you, which is uh for a coastal development permit at six four zero zero Merritt Drive. Next slide, please. Um this property, this property is located in the Malibu West neighborhood near Zuma Beach. Next slide. The property highlighted in this aerial photograph, um it fronts Pacific Coast Highway along its southern property line, but it takes access from a driveway that extends from uh Merritt Drive towards the north. Next slide, please. Uh this approximately two point seven acre parcel um in the rural residential two acre zone is currently developed with a single family house and a garage that were originally constructed in nineteen fifty six. Um as shown in this aerial bird's eye view of the property, the parcel is cited amongst other similarly developed parcels with single family dwellings and accessory structures. Next slide, please. Um the slide illustrates the location of the existing dwelling and the garage within the parcel. You have the dwelling dwelling in blue and the garage in green. Next slide. And here are just some photographs of the existing house, the front and rear elevations, um along with the uh story poles that show the extents of the proposed dwelling. Next slide, please. So this application is um for demolition of the existing dwelling um and and the accessory structures on on the parcel. Um it proposes constructing a new five thousand six hundred ninety nine square foot, one-story, single-family residence um which includes a seven hundred and ninety seven uh square foot basement. Um there is also a seven hundred and ninety seven square foot detached garage, a seven hundred and fifty square foot studio slash gym um and eight hundred sixty square foot second residential unit. Um and there is also a hundred and seventeen square foot pool cabana uh which does have a four hundred and forty square foot TDSF due to um the roof overhang um over to the parts of that pool cabana. In total, there is a you told, um there is gonna be eight thousand five hundred and forty six uh total TDSF proposed. The project also, oh, excuse me, next slide, please. Uh the project also includes two swimming pools and a spa. Um it proposes a outdoor clay tennis court. There will be a new driveway turnaround and uncovered guest parking um as well as a new onsite wastewater treatment system and sea fish pits and new landscaping. Next slide, please. So this application is uh for a coastal development permit. There are no other discretionary requests um involved with this application. Next slide. Um so this is an existing uh site plan that depicts locations of the existing developments um in solid gray shading um over a slope analysis. The existing proposed development, um oh, it's I'm sorry, the existing and the proposed development, um they are concentrated in the central portions of the parcel as depicted in yellow, and they know they have no more than uh, these are areas that have no more than four to one slopes. The I want, I do wanna note that the southwestern portion of the parcel is characterized by an inland bluff that descends down towards Pacific Coast Highway, um and that's highlighted by the red lines um on the left of this image. Um after geotechnical analysis and approval by the city's geotechnical staff, the bluff setback uh was allowed to be reduced to fifty feet. Uh one of the proposed swimming pools has been set back to meet this requirement, and the new dwelling um outline in red uh will be located further inland than the previous house on the site. Next slide, please. Uh this crop site plan shows the locations of the main buildings and structures proposed for the parcel. You have the the of the Hubble areas, you have the main house in green, you have a studio and gym um in red. The second residential unit in um yellow. There is a garage um towards the middle part of the parcel, and there is two poles flanking uh both sides of this image. And then the tennis court is at your lower um bottom right. Next slide, please. Um so briefly, I'm just gonna go through the the floor plans and elevations of the project. Uh this is the floor plan for the main house. As I mentioned before, this project does have a uh a basement, which is depicted on the top left of this uh floor plan. And that um area is shown, um is located in the blue shaded portion of the main how, main levels for a plan. Next slide, please. Here's the elevation, northeast elevation, which is the front of the house, along with the side. Next slide, please. And here is the southwest elevation, which is the rear of the part of the, the main house facing PCH and Pacific Ocean, along with the left side of the house. I do want to note that this house does have a maximum height of eighteen feet. Next slide, please. Here is an image of or elevations and floor plans of the detached garage. It'll house two cars along with some storage space on the side. This will be about 12 feet tall, 797 square feet. Next slide. Here are elevations of the studio and gym. Maximum height of fourteen and a half feet, 750 square feet here. Next slide, please. And we have a second residential unit that will be about fifteen and a half feet tall. TDSF of 860 square feet. Next slide, please. And lastly, we do have a a cabana that will be adjacent to the larger of the two poles proposed of the site. This cabana will be thirteen feet tall. And it will have a TDSF of 440 square feet. Next slide, please. Based on the required findings made in the staff report and in the record, staff is recommending approval of this coastal development permit number twenty one dash seventy two and the demolition of demolition permit number twenty one dash zero two zero. Staff and the applicant team are available for any questions if you have any. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, staff. Let's open the public hearing. Patricia, who have we got for the applicant?
We have Richard Holmes, a homeowner that will be representing he and his team. He also has Tom Torres, the architect, available for questions. And they also have Mark Treebold, the geologist, also available for questions.
All right, do we have any other speakers?
And we have two other speakers, Joe Drummond and Ryan Embry.
Okay, let's, let's open the, the applicant's presentation.
One moment, I'm going to modify the timer for the homeowner.
Okay.
Gentlemen, this is Richard Holmes, I'm the homeowner, and I'm actually sitting in my house in Malibu with Tom Torres on this Zoom, who has been the architect. And thank you in advance for your time to have reviewed the project.
Okay, before you get going, you have fifteen minutes, you can use any or all of that, or choose to use as much as you choose. With your presentation, you can reserve time or rebuttal if you choose to do that. But fifteen minutes is what you have in total.
Yes, sir. Well, maybe I'll accelerate my comments then.
Hold on. Chair Jennings, I don't think we took disclosures on this item, did we?
I'm sorry, you're quite right. Before we begin the hearing, or before we begin your presentation, let's get disclosures. Dennis?
I met with Mr. Holmes and Mr. Torres today at the site, didn't learn anything different, what's in the staff report?
John?
I talked to Adrian today about section ten point four of the LIP, nothing that isn't in the LIP record.
Greg?
I did a site visit with the applicant, I had a few questions about bluff edge and setback. They said they'd send me a ten page summary, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't expect to get 300 plus pages that was all sent out to you guys.
Right, nothing for me, including the geological report. All right, Trevor, thank you. Let's go back to Mr. Holmes.
All right, well, sort of quickly, picking up, I didn't understand disclosures, yes. Those were accurate, but I'm not sure if it's necessary to disclose or not, but over the years, I have, you know, exchanged through Nextdoor some comments back and forth with John Maza, where I've tried to be very sensitive to understanding what people would like to have in new development in Malibu. I've never met with them officially, but I did exchange some messages with him. And, you know, Tom Torres and I, from the very beginning, took the design concept of we wanted to be very much more in tune with the land and the natural beauty and not create some large two story monster house. So that was sort of the mandate that, that Tom and I worked on and appreciate all the feedback we've gotten over the years as we've worked through this project. And may I turn it over to Tom?
Now, I'm, I will, thank you, good evening, everyone. I'm available to answer any questions, and I believe Mark Treebold, if there's any direct questions, he's available as well. So we'll reserve the time to respond accordingly.
Okay, you've got thirteen minutes and thirty six seconds of reserved time. Joe Drummond?
Hi there.
Hi.
I think Ryan Embry is donating a minute to me.
Ryan, can you put your hand up?
Just to be clear, that policy goes into effect at the next meeting, when the chair, the chair can, through his discretion, allow the donation if he wants.
Ryan, do you wish to donate your time to Joe Drummond? Unmute Ryan for me, please, thank you.
Well, I don't know, I kind of had a question, but I, I think Joe is probably better adept at it. I'm just concerned about all the bluff failures that are happening recently.
Okay, you either have to give your time or you don't, Brian, either way, one or the other.
I'll give my time to Joe, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You've got four minutes, Joe.
Okay, thanks. As per my email today to you all, I just wanted to elaborate on the factor of safety calculation completed by Subsurface Designs and questions on the geotechnical review sheet dated November twenty sixth, two thousand and nineteen. The review states on page two, the project geotechnical consultant performed gross rotational slope stability analysis, assuming shear strength parameters for the terrace deposits of coefficient equals three hundred and sixty PSF and angle of, of twenty eight degrees. These shear strength values were obtained from a direct shear test on a sample obtained from DH three at twenty feet below existing grade. Based on a review of the log of boring DH three, clean sand materials susceptible to caving was encountered at twenty feet. Clean sand thick layers were encountered in terrace deposits in most farings. Clean sand materials are expected to exhibit no to low, very low cohesion. Hence, the project geotechnical consultant needs to discuss the representation of the tested sample to clean sand layers in the slope stability analysis. And in the April eighth, twenty twenty, Subsurface Design doesn't really respond to this by stating the shear strength value utilized for the terrace deposits was not assumed, however, based on laboratory testing. Sheer strength values of the terrace deposits from the property immediately to the northwest by Geo Concepts Inc. have been reviewed. It appears these shear strength values may be more appropriate based on the material description review comment and were utilized through the review and approval process for development of a new single family residence located at two nine nine one seven Pacific Coast Highway, AKA six four oh six Merit Drive. So revised slope stability test analysis have been performed utilizing the shear strength value discussed above. Slope stability analysis on section AA and BB calculates a factor of safety in excess of the code required 1.5. Now, the latest six four oh six Merit Drive geology report that they're basing this on was completed December sixth, two thousand and six, over fifteen years ago. And number one, it's really not relevant, as it is not the same property. And number two, the material description slash review comment is not the same as the November twenty sixth, two thousand and nineteen review sheet. So do not understand why this wasn't questioned again by the geotechnical staff and planning staff as it wasn't responded to, that the cohesion strength that should have been used would be closer to zero rather than 450 from the two thousand and six other properties report. Therefore, the factor of safety would not meet the minimum 1.5, and a variance would need to be applied for. Also, there should be a variance for building on the steep slope edge. The other LIP violations of nine point three A, nine point four E, and thirteen point nine is the least environmentally damaging alternative was not utilized. Even though in the staff report, it states a reduced project alternative could be proposed on the project site. Should the footprint be reduced, the direct land disturbance as a result of construction would be reduced. Also, the bluffage has been measured from the lower riser of the steps, so the fifty feet minimum should be farther from the edge. If you were looking at a least environmentally damaging alternative, the first thing would be to remove the pool closest to the slope and build further away on a smaller footprint. There are just too many unanswered questions in an earthquake induced landslide area and all the LIP violations regarding the least environmentally damaging alternatives. So this should be sent back to planning for answers. I do find it personally terrible that I personally cannot permit a sixty foot square foot deck on my property, which is nowhere near a bluff. But in a landslide area at a project with two swimming pools and structures totaling almost 9,000 square feet gets relatively easily through the planning department. About a year ago, a large cantilever pool in the bluff in Big Rock also started construction without a variance, which is just frightening. This shows the blatant unfair treatment of us little people as compared to big money development in Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other speakers? Patricia?
We have no other speakers.
Okay, we're going to close the public hearing and come back to the commission table. Oh, I'm sorry, you have thirteen minutes, thirteen minutes and thirty six seconds, Mr. Holmes. Soon as she gets her clock set, we'll be ready to.
I would think that Mark Treebold should address the ladies' questions. I, I don't agree with most of her assertions, but I think Mark can speak specifically to them.
That's fine, thirteen minutes and thirty six seconds, let's go.
Yes, hi, this is Mark Treebold. Yeah, in response to the Joe Drummond's comments. We ran the stability analysis for that, for that self descending slope in two, in two different occasions. And the first occasion, we used our own samples, and we came up with factors of safety that exceeded 1.5. And then what it is common to do is you do a comparison with what other consultants have found in the area on the same material. And we ran the stability analysis again using the other consultants data, because sometimes that comes into question with the city reviewers. And upon running that stability analysis, we once again had a factor of safety exceeding 1.5. So this site, there are no landslides on this property, so that is not in question whatsoever. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Well, I, I think, I don't want to say it was offensive, but I'm not a big money developer. I'm a person that lives in Malibu trying to build a house. So it's, I'm not quite sure what the personal suggestions or attacks by that was supposed to try to accomplish, so. Tom, what?
Yeah, just a couple of points. One is the top of the bluff is established by, by Subsurface had a factor, has a factor of 1.7, which is in excess of 1.5. Also, the seismic, well, I won't even go into that because that's over the limit as well in terms of acceptability, and it's in excess of that. I don't quite understand the analysis that's being made, that this is comparable to Big Rock or any other slope. There's, there's a history on this slope, there's, there's, there's been a thorough, this has been going on, gentlemen, since two thousand and seventeen. We've done an extensive amount of work in analyzing what's there and what's not there. And I think if there are specific questions that, that any of the commissioners have would love to address them. And as far as the 300 pages of dialogue that were sent to you, I, I sent those because I thought if the questions were being asked specifically about the top of slope, the fifty foot setback, there should be a history of their, they wanted to know that, and that's why that was sent. That was not sent to confuse anybody, it was sent to be add clarification to what the city staff had already determined. I think, Mark, if you have anything else to add to that, would be appreciated.
I don't, I don't have anything to add to that right now, Tom. I, I think the work speaks for itself. We did a lot of work out there, and we've gone through a lot of questions with the city, and, and I think we've responded appropriately. And it's a good, it's a good site. That's the bottom line.
All right, does that conclude your presentation?
Will the.
Unless there's other questions from the commissioners.
Once we close the public hearing, if there are commissioners who have questions, they'll be able to ask them to you. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, fine. So that concludes the public hearing, we're back at the commission table, commission comments, motion. Whatever. Yes, John?
A question to staff. I want to know how the blow, the bluff edge was determined, because when I look at, and I wish you would pull up sheet one of one on the slope study. It does show the red area that's one to one or two, less than two and a half to one. Coming right up next to the house. So why was the upper one to one slope not used?
You understand the question, Richard? I mean, we got, yeah, David, I'm sorry.
Well, to that question, unfortunately, I can't speak to how the, the, the two areas of one to one were distinguished. That was something that was reviewed and reviewed by our geotechnical staff. It was a determination that the top of bluff would only be in the the portion that is that larger swath of red towards Pacific Ocean.
So we don't have what I consider a rational determination of top of slope, since they're both the same slope.
Do you want to ask the geologist with a question?
I don't know, he determined it. I'll ask him.
I can give you a couple quotes from the report that.
Do you want to ask the geologist, John, or not?
I'll ask him if he had anything to do with it. Did you, Mr., I forgot his name, did you determine the top of bluff?
Mark Treebold.
Mark Treebold.
Yeah, hi, John. Yes, I did aid in determining the top of bluff. Mike, I'm a little curious as to which area you're, you're pointing to as far as a one to one slope gradient, because I don't have anything.
Well, I'm looking at, at, at sheet one of one of the slope analysis, color coded slope analysis.
Alex, if you can pull up slide ten of the presentation.
Well, that's not the same one, but sure. But you can see that if you look on the slope analysis, the area, so the top of bluff would be top of bluff in that one point. But according to the slope analysis, it goes beyond that structure, whatever it is that is sort of gray.
Right, I believe that has to do with the fact that that's a reentrant area, it's not truly the bluff portion of the slope. So there's a reentrant swale that comes through the property along this, along what would be, I guess that's the southeast corner.
Whatever, what's a reentry?
It's a, it's a swale, it's a general, it's a swale that comes through there.
I know, but the swale is on a one to one slope, according to the table above.
Right, right, but it's not considered the top of the bluff. The nick point, the bluff is defined by this, where the bluff goes from a steep gradient to a gentle gradient, and that's where it was called the top. Which puts it further down.
I just want to ask you, there, there's that gray line, and then above it, there's another some kind of structure where it's yellow on one side and red on the other. And that red goes all the way down basically to the highway. So why isn't that the same slope and why isn't the top of the bluff?
It's probably, it's because there's a grade break. You see the yellow? That, that's a definite, a definite grade break on the south.
But I'm talking about the, the north part of the lot, or the, I guess, west part of the lot. It appears to be that the, the cliff, whatever you want to call it, goes from that.
It appears to be that the, the cliff, whatever you want to call it, goes from that, whatever it is, a wall or something that's got a black line around it, straight to the highway at the same, same slope. So why would that not be the top of the bluff if it's the same slope all the way up to that?
The great break. It, it really is the grade break that defines it. And, and then we get into the terracing because there's several walls there at the top.
John, I can, I can clarify some stuff for you here that might make this point moot. It, it seems like there's some other things to answer before we get to this question.
Okay. Well, let me ask you this. You keep talking about the grade break, but the grade break is only the yellow at, at the bottom half. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the slope from the top half, the western half of the lot.
Yes.
And that has no change in grade. So how can it, how can the top of slope be in the middle of a one-to-one slope?
It, it's not.
Well, it is on this analysis. And, and then my second question would be the yellow area. And looking, from looking at aerials, it looks like that must have been an ancient landslide. It didn't just go flat all of a sudden and then go down again.
Oh, no, no, not, it's not an ancient landslide. That is, no, it's, what it is, is that was done in the past when they terraced the slope and built the walls, et cetera. It has nothing to do with ancient slide because for that to be an ancient slide, the bedrock below would have to be, uh, have to have translated and it's not. It's intact, solid bedrock.
Okay, I understand that then, but why would you grade the slope where there's no wall and not grade the slope where there is a wall?
I, I can't answer that. That occurred many years ago.
Okay. Well, I, I'm just questioning the top of grade. If you look in the, they give examples in the LIP on how you're supposed to calculate it. As long as I have you as a geologist, did you follow the procedures in LIP ten point four development standards for slope analysis? Did, did you do an actual one point, actual stability analysis on this lot? Using, using the cross-section modeling worst-case model?
Yes, yes.
And the pseudostatic method?
Yes.
And the, you did an earthquake analysis?
Yes.
Okay, and you did a, there's ten of them, and I hope I don't have to go through them all.
Commissioner Maza, this lot is as flat as Kansas.
Well, that's what the red says it isn't. Okay.
That's out front. Got nothing to do with what you're trying to get to.
I'm trying to find the slope analysis. Okay. Okay, so now you said you found a plain of sand, right?
No, no, we didn't find a plain of sand. The, the top of the lot is capped by what we call a marine terrace sand. Yes. And below that terrace sand is bedrock.
Okay, so you went all, you went through the bedrock. Okay.
Yes.
How, what did you calculate as a hundred-year bluff retreat?
Well, I, I presented that in a discussion. What we have here is a site that has, when you look at bluff retreat, you look at several major factors for bluff retreat, okay? And those factors are, number one, is the property subject to direct wave attack? Okay, in this case, the property is not subject to direct wave attack.
Excuse me a second. Can you show me in the code where it says that? Because it doesn't.
Oh, it, it's, okay, this is, it's not in your, the code, no. This is, this is what geologists do to, 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 to evaluate a property.
Yeah, but this is, this is the norm Haney approach, which was the coastal commission turned down as valid. Okay, and all bluff fronts, on this bluff especially, a house on, a house built by the, the brother, the local doctor, we made move back a pool because they, they said it wasn't a bluff front or it was. This is specifically by coastal commission, a coastal bluff.
A different question, but go ahead, John.
Well, so, so the question is, what bluff setback? Their code requires you to be fifty feet from the hundred-year bluff erosion. And apparently, the bluff erosion was never calculated.
Well, it was, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
No, no, no. What I was kind of getting at here is when you evaluate rates of bluff retreat, you look at what are, what are the, what are the factors that contribute to it? And one of them is direct wave attack. And you look at that, in this case, there is none, so you can't apply a number of bluff retreat to this particular lot with regards to direct wave attack. This is not like properties along cliffside where you have direct wave attack at the toe, at the bluff toe.
Right. My, my question is, obviously, this is seventy-foot bluff. There's no waves ever going to hit the top of it. We're talking about the top of the bluff. As per this line, you're required to calculate the bluff retreat in a hundred years at the top of the bluff. And then you set back fifty feet from there. Now, rain, whatever changes, erosion changes is the way you factor bluff retreat. Not, you can't just ignore it. It's required under ten point four because the fifty-foot setback is determined upon the hundred-year bluff retreat line. So that calculation was never made, scientists.
We, we did not make that calculation, no.
Okay. And, okay, so how, and then this is the question to staff. How can we calculate, David, how can we calculate the fifty-foot setback if we don't know the bluff retreat line?
I think the question we should be asking, Mark, so there are two methods in chapter ten. And they, about reducing the setback to fifty feet. And the, I think, Mark, if you could help us, since you were the one that interacted with our city geologists, your standard is, in section D, is a one-hundred-foot setback. But it could be reduced to a lesser setback, provided that the bluff exhibits a factor. If the bluff exhibits a factor of, so the code here says, just to get it straight, only one of the two conditions exist. If the bluff exhibits a factor of safety less than one point five for either gross or superficial landsliding, then the location on the bluff top at which the one point five factor of safety exists shall be determined. I think, did you find a situation where the, the bluff exhibited a factor of safety less than one point five?
No, we did not. The fact, this bluff exhibits all factors of safety that exceed the required minimums of one point five.
Yeah, Richard, you have to continue to the point at which you can't, it says you may not, may not reduce the setback less than fifty feet from the erosion line. The hundred-year bluff erosion line. You may not do it. We may not, as a body, do that. Okay, it's precluded. So you can't make it forty-five feet, for example. So if the bluff goes back in a hundred years, it comes back five feet, we have to add five feet on the other end. It's just the law. And that analysis apparently was never done.
So, Mark, are you aware of our geologists looking at this? Or did anybody make a somewhat of a, excuse me, not somewhat, a site-specific evaluation on the bluff retreat rate and an allowance for possible acceleration based on historic evidence?
No, I'm not aware of that. My conversations with the top of bluff and the setback was dealt with Christine and then I, I really had no other questions from Chris regarding pushing that setback further.
Okay, so, so, Richard, my point is, and a required analysis that is required to do the setback was never made. And the setback is, by definition, incorrect.
My suggestion to the commission, this seems to be a sticking point for you, would be to recommend if this is something critical, I would suggest that we continue the item and we can either have a statement from the city geologist or we can have our geologist present if this is going to be an issue.
Well, I, I suggested it would be very easy to do and it would be very easy to move the house back. If he determined, if they get a determination that it's four feet over a hundred years, we just move the house back four feet. But it is required. And if this gets appealed to coastal, it is flat out in ten point four and the other sections that cover bluff setbacks.
And you want to move to continue the item, John?
I will move to continue the item.
Your date uncertain or dates?
Well, I don't think it will take that long. Let Richard decide. I know we got some big meetings, but.
Was asking that question of Richard, actually.
I would say that the soonest we could bring this back would be the first meeting in December. And the reason why I say that is because we are currently wrapping up the reports. Basically, I got to have them on my desk in about a day and a half for your November fifteenth agenda.
Okay, so I'll make it twelve one.
But is, you say that's the soonest you could bring it back. Is that a comfortable date for you or do you? Richard, twelve one is okay?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, that's the motion. I'll second it. There further discussion?
Yeah, by way of clarification on that or just asking. There are, the definition of the bluff edge, this is pretty concrete. The LIP defines bluff edge, this is a quote, "In a case where there is a step-like feature at the top of the cliff face, the landward edge of the topmost riser shall be taken to be the bluff edge." The topmost riser. The definition that the geological engineer says, and I don't know if this was written by Mark Treebold or somebody prior, says use the definition as the point at which the upward termination of the steep bluff transitions to a more gentle slope gradient has been designated as the top of bluff. So that, that definition doesn't comport what the LIP says. It basically says, the LIP doesn't care if one bit is steeper than the other bit. It's just if there are steps, you take the top one.
So, would you like me to amend it to, I don't know how we're making a motion. We're continuing to twelve one and there's a couple of questions to be answered.
Yeah, look, you, Craig has raised another issue, which I'm sure the geologists just heard. And, but the matter is going to be continued. It will come back for a full de novo analysis on that date. So the, the architect, Mr. Treebold and the applicant should be mindful of the concerns of Craig Hill as well.
Okay, so that's my motion. Do we have a second?
I seconded it.
Oh, okay.
Let's, uh, let's call the roll, please.
And Patricia, if I may jump in for a moment, it's twelve six. Is that the correct date?
Correct. That would, that's the first meeting of December.
Twelve six.
Call the roll, please, Patricia.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Um, yes, and Tom, I'd like to talk to you more about this.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Motion carries.
All right. Motion to adjourn, please.
I'm moved.
I'll second it. Call the roll, please, Patricia.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah.
Meeting adjourned.